Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the June 23, 2014, meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Chaplain Chris Allen, who is a humanist chaplain. He is the president of the Florida Humanist Association and founding executive director of Hands on Orlando. Chaplain Allen is also a member of the Central Florida Free Thought Community, a chapter of the Freedom from Religion Foundation, and an affiliate of the American Humanist Association. One of the organization's objectives is to educate the public on the need for equal treatment of nonbelievers. The invocation will be followed today by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by District One Commissioner Jim Gray. Would everyone please join me in standing?
Let us give thanks for all that we have cherished and possess, especially for the capacity to care and love, to improve ourselves, our families, and community. Whatever one's viewpoint, either derived from faith or from reason informed by science, having the capacity to appreciate and thank others is ingrained in the DNA of the human condition. We give thanks to volunteers, the heart and soul of our community, who donate their time and talents to help the less fortunate. And in this setting, let's recognize and laud the sacrifices made by many government workers, especially firefighters and police officers, who risk their lives to safeguard others no matter where residents live, or if they are rich or poor. Understanding the awesome responsibility of public service, we thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for using compassion and fairness, and for not acting for personal gain, or out of fear or favor. As citizens and voters, we possess great hope that our elected officials make choices that give all people in this community, to the extent that they can, an opportunity to achieve the American dream, and to help build a greater Orlando.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business is the consideration of the minutes from the Agenda Review Meeting of June the 2nd, and the City Council Meeting Minutes of June the 2nd, and the Budget Workshop Meetings Minutes of June the 9th.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, I'm going to take that as a second. Commissioner Ortiz, on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Let's go right into awards and recognitions and presentations. So the first one is commemorating the Hispanic Bar Association's 200th honorary membership. And Luis Martinez, our Director of Multicultural Affairs, will introduce that presentation. Luis?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners and guests. As the Hispanic Latino community continues to grow in Central Florida, many community organizations do an outstanding job serving as the voice of this population. One of these entities is the Hispanic Bar Association of Central Florida, which serves as an advocate for the rights of the Hispanic community by helping them learn and understand their legal rights, and gain greater access to the courts and the legal system. Today, it is an honor to introduce Stephanie Faddis, President of the Hispanic Bar Association of Central Florida, who will present a recognition to Mayor Dyer for his contribution to the well-being of the Hispanic community.
Thank you, Luis, for that wonderful introduction. It is our absolute honor and privilege to be here with the mayor and all of you today on behalf of the Hispanic Bar Association of Central Florida. I'd like to take a quick opportunity to recognize our board members, who have given so much of their time to make sure that we carry out the purpose and the mission of the Hispanic Bar Association. Our immediate past president, Kimberly Lopez; Luis Gonzalez, our president-elect; Irene Pons, our secretary; Sylvia Banyas, our treasurer; Furman Lopez, our Judicial Relations Chair; Henry Lim, our Community Relations Chair; Jacela then Laurent, our Public Relations Chair; Mitzi Carr, our Fundraising Chair; Vanessa Cato, our Membership Chair; Diego Puig, our Bylaws Chair; and our newly appointed position Edgar Lopez, our Government Relations Chair. And also Jessica Mahin Gonzalez, our Young Lawyers Chair. It is our honor to be given the opportunity to recognize a special person in our community, Mayor Buddy Dyer, and show him our thanks and appreciation for all that he has done for our community. The Hispanic Bar Association of Central Florida is a nonprofit organization incorporated in 1991. The HBACF stands ready to advocate for the rights of the Hispanic community, and helps advocate for the rights of those who need to learn and understand what their legal rights are, and gain greater access to the courts and to the legal system. Our organization is growing every day. We have over 200 members, and it is with great honor to recognize Mayor Buddy Dyer as our 200th honorary member.
I didn't have in my notes you were doing that.
Yes, thank you. Yes, that's right. Well, and this plaque says, "200th Honorary Member Presented to Mayor Buddy Dyer on June 23, 2014. Thank you for your years of dedicated service to the community."
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to call on Rodney Williams for the next presentation.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. It is my pleasure to introduce to you today our newest partners in the fight to close the nutrition gap that widens when the school year ends. Twenty-seven percent of Orlando's children live below the poverty level, and are at risk for not having access to nutritious food during the summer months. Commissioner Robert Stewart introduced us to Sodexo early this year to pilot their Feeding Our Future program at three city recreation sites, Rosemont, Ivy Lane, and Northwest. This program provides 250 meals per day, a total of 12,250, over the summer to ensure that children participating in the programs at the centers after 5:30 PM receive a healthy meal. On June 19, Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Hill, along with three representatives from Sodexo Magic distributed food to the children at the Rosemont Community Center. In addition to the daily meals, Sodexo Magic will host a cooking demonstration at each location to promote healthy eating and positive food choices. Participants will receive a recipe to take home so that they can prepare a healthy meal for their families. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Alejandro Fonseca, Vice President of Operations Locally for Sodexo Magic and Sodexo's joint venture with Magic Johnson Enterprises, and Mr. Mark Bigford, President of Sodexo's Business and Industry Division in the corporate services market, to say a few words on behalf of Sodexo. And at the close, we'll have Vion Welcome, Vion, I'm sorry, Vion Welcome from our Rosemont Community Center, who will come and talk about what the program has done for him and his family. Mr. Fonseca?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. On behalf of Sodexo and Sodexo Magic's more than 3,000 employees in Central and Southern Florida, we're really glad to have this opportunity to make an impact on the community. You know, Feeding Our Future is now in 23 cities across the country, and hope with your help, this summer, we're going to be serving our four-millionth meal to help reduce that gap and impact our communities. Working with private-public partners, commissioners, like Mr. Stewart, and of course, our team, which, by the way, we have here Mrs. Jackie Sharp, our Wellness Director for Sodexo Magic, who's actually leading most of the efforts with our volunteers in Orlando, it is that we're able to deliver this great option to our children in Orlando. So, thank you once again, and thank you for letting us be part of this council and make Orlando a better city. Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council Members, and Alejandro, thank you for all, and Jackie, for all you do here to help support the community. Just a couple of brief words about Sodexo as an organization, and Sodexo Magic, you may not be as familiar, but we're a global organization. We operate in 82 countries around the world. We employ 430,000 employees, and we're actually the 18th largest employer in the world. And what's great about that is that we have the ability each day to impact 75 million people around the globe, and really impact their quality of life. And we do that through delivering integrated facilities management services and food service operations, with the real focus on ensuring that we're focused on the individual wellness and their being, as well as helping organizations be more competitive for all of the clients that we have the opportunity to serve. So, you may say, "A big company, a very big company, Sodexo, you know, why are we here? Why do we do what we do in the communities?" And I'll just share just two brief reasons. First, it's really about our people. Ninety-seven percent of all our employees live in the communities where we operate, so it's very important for them to give back to those communities. And second, because of a company of our size and resources, we know we can make a difference. So for Sodexo and Sodexo Magic, each and every day, we're operating in schools and universities, we're operating in hospitals and senior-assisted living centers, corporations all throughout the world, and we really know that we have the access to the resources and the ability to really make a difference. So, we're very, very much proud of the services that we can provide. And as Alejandro said, we have 3,000 Sodexo and Sodexo Magic employees in the Central and South Florida area. And I myself, I'm from the Northeast, and I recently became a Floridian. I moved here in October, and I have to tell you, the quality of my life has changed already because I missed the winter this year, and it was the greatest thing ever. So, I love being a Floridian. And I would just, you know, like to, on behalf of our 3,000 employees, say thank you, and we're really proud of what we can do to help support the communities. And also, I would just like to give recognition to Gordon Food Services, who was partnering and helping us and funding what we're doing here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Commissioners, and Sodexo executives. My name is Vion Welcome. I am 14-years-old, and I will be attending Edgewater High School as a freshman this fall. I'm a registered participant at the Rosemont Community Center. As we know, during the summer, families across the United States incur an additional expense towards the family budget in the area of food. I would like to thank Commissioner Stewart, Sodexo, and the Recreation Department for implementing the Sodexo program at our site. As a result of Sodexo, Rosemont has been given the incredible opportunity to feed not only children who are registered in the summer program, but those in the community at large who participate at the center, ensuring that no child has to go to bed hungry. This program has served as an additional help to me and my family, as well as other families in our community. As a beneficiary of these meals, I speak for not only my family, but countless others in extending our appreciation and gratitude for this program. And again, we would like to say thank you.
So if we can get Mayor, if we can get Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Hill, if you could come down and bring the kids up and take a picture.
Okay, we're going to have one more presentation that I've added on. We've had several workshops to discuss the upcoming budget year, and we've had a number of in-depth presentations relating to how Amendment 1 and the recession have impacted our city's budget. We took a look at how our departments have made reductions in their budgets. In fact, we have cut over $379 million out of our budget since 2002. However, we still have a challenge moving forward this year and years in the future due to the limitations legislatures put on our ability to grow our revenues. So, I wanted to have Rebecca update us on the most recent financial forecast information that we received last week. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Last week, last Thursday, actually, we received our preliminary tax roll from the property appraiser, the county property appraiser, and have now updated our budget with those numbers. And I wanted to take you through the status of where we are as a result. Before I do, however, I wanted to discuss just a moment for the benefit of those who may be viewing this presentation, is to talk a little bit about what we mean by a budget gap. I think there are occasionally some confusion, there is occasionally some confusion with regard to what we're really talking about in this case. Essentially, when we go through a planning process, it's purely a planning process. We're looking at what we want to do next year, what kind of expected revenues we anticipate, what type of expenditures would be necessary to continue our current service levels at the approved level that we have, and any necessary changes in current spending patterns. These might be things like additional amounts that we need for gasoline, for instance, for fuel, because of changes in the cost, basically the cost of that particular item, and then other types of things like that. But basically, it's do the same thing that you did in this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and how much will that cost? When our first preliminary tabulation is complete, when we take each of those line items, each of that detail, update it with the best information that we have at the time, we add up the revenues, we add up all of our expenditures, we subtract the expenditures from the revenues, and determine if the revenues are at least as much as our expenditures. Resulting negative number is a budget gap that must be eliminated either by reducing our expenditures, increasing our revenues, or a combination of the both. It is not a debt, and it is not a budget deficit. Those words are sometimes used for this particular thing. They occur only when we're working in actual expenditures and revenues, not when we're doing planning for the future year, because we always can make the changes necessary in advance to make sure that our plans are balanced, and we do that each year. We did receive, as I indicated before, the preliminary tax roll, it's called the DR420, last Thursday. It resulted in a total of $108,900,000 in total ad lorm tax. $95,700,000 of that goes to the general fund. You may wonder what the difference is there. That's the amount, those are the amounts that we must distribute as tax increment revenues to each of our CRAs. And so, the tax comes into the general fund, it goes out of the general fund as tax increment revenues, and there is a technical difference in those two things. And so, as a result, we are looking at that difference, and a $95 million, $95.7 million net ad lorm tax for the general fund. That's an additional $6,500,000 roughly over and above what we had last year, okay? And that's a percentage increase of about 6.3%. We haven't received the updates unfortunately yet from the state for their distributed revenues. That includes things like state sales tax, our municipal revenue sharing, communication services tax, and the like. However, we have received updates of our population used in this distribution, and we are up 2%, while the rest of Florida is up only 1%. So, we would anticipate that there would be some improvement in the distribution that we would be having from the state on these particular revenues. However, all that said, our real estate values have not recovered. Even though our economy has recovered fairly nicely to this point, our real estate values have not. And I just showed in this particular graphic, the real estate values in 2008/9 versus the real estate values in this preliminary roll. We had $25 billion of taxable value in fiscal 2008/9. We now have only $20 billion in 2014/15. The 13.9% is the amount of the total tax roll that are comprised by exemptions and caps. So, in 2008/9, we had 13.9% of our tax roll containing exemptions, or being exemptions and caps, and reducing the appraised value, or reducing the taxable value from the appraised value. We have today 20.3% of the tax, of the appraised value reduced as a result of caps and exemptions. I think this is a question that you often pose to me when we talk about this, and that is, you know, what is the impact of the tax reform measures that were taken in the last decade? And that's about, as you can see right there, that's about a 6% difference in what those exemptions would be otherwise. And obviously, you can do the math on the $25 billion to determine what that actually is comprised. So, going back to our budget balancing activities, the revenue and expense difference before our initial budget balancing, including that $6.5 million, by the way, that we got out of the preliminary tax roll, we have a budget gap of $52 million. We are instituting and proposing, I guess at this particular point, a $15 million, 4.5% across-the-board cut in expenses. I think this is important, we'll talk about this in a moment again. We're going to fund half of our annual capital contribution from other sources other than the general fund. The general fund will fund half. We will have an additional half from other sources that are available for that. We think that going another year on half is probably not recommended, but the general fund can't support it. So, we are looking at some temporary measures outside the general fund to make sure that we have additional street money and additional park money for maintenance, because as our presentations previously indicated to you, there are some fairly pressing needs in those areas. We want to be sure that we at least do what we can to address those items. We're asking to use the forfeiture fund to fund a portion, just a little more than half, I believe, of our school resource officer's cost, which is $2.5 million. And then, we have a number of revenue adjustments. We presented this before as $500,000 of fee adjustments. We have some other revenue adjustments as well that we're finalizing right now for a half a million dollars as well. So, that brings us then to a $29 million remaining balance needed, either through revenue enhancement, or through program service reductions, to get us to a balanced budget for this next fiscal year. So, our alternatives remaining, I guess, I'm going to lay these out. I think that you, the Commissioners, have stated on several occasions, some of their desires in this area, but I just want to lay these out one more time. To address $17 million of the gap, we could further cut programs beyond the $15 million across-the-board cut in expenses that is already there. That is a very stout number to cut expenses at this particular point, but we are willing to step up to it. And then, an additional cut of programs further, an additional $17 million to get the total that we need, and that would be a sizable service level adjustment, something that would be noticeable. Secondly, raise the tax rate. A dollar on the tax rate, or one mil, is equal to $17 million in additional revenue to the general fund. Or you could do a combination of the two. In our last workshop, it seemed, from my seat at least, that we were hesitant to really do any service level cuts. And I think with the $15 million across-the-board cut, I think that that would be what we would be left with if we were going down the expenditure cut route. So, raising the tax rate may be what the Commissioners wish to go forward with, and I'm certainly willing to discuss that further with any of you if you need to. To address the remaining $12 million, we have several things that we are continuing to work on. The first is an increase in the OUC transfer payment. That has been under discussion for the last month, and there are some additional items, some additional meetings that we want to have to finalize that number. That number will be considered by the OUC Board in its budget workshop in July, and so we'll be able to finalize that particular payment. We believe that there will be at least a sizable increase in that OUC transfer payment. Finally, updates from the Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research, who does the state revenue estimating, should be forthcoming in the next few weeks on state distributed revenues, with an increase expected over the October 2013 estimates that we have in hand right now. And so, we will be looking at that. We're also looking at utility services tax. We're getting some information from OUC, we're looking at that as well. We are not alone in this kind of activity. Just only this last week, and I think if we look further back, we're going to see some other governments that are in the same situation, or if we look in previous years, there have been adjustments that have been made to revenues by other governments. But just this last week, there was an article done on a potential reserve draw for Tampa at the last of this fiscal year. Lakeland is considering a fire fee. Ocala is looking- Ocala is looking at revenue enhancement. Miami-Dade is looking at a 450 police officer reduction. Palm Beach County is considering various actions to balance their budget, and Marion County is also. And this is just in the last week. So I don't think that it's accurate to characterize that we're the only ones that are in this situation. There are certainly others with us. I think it's important, though, for us to kind of look at this one mil and kind of what does it really mean? And I think that even with one mil, we don't get back to our 2009 ad lorum tax number. You can see here that we were at $137 million in 2008-9. With full mil, we'll just be at $128 million. I think as well, if you just look at the average homestead property, this is just a graph of the history of the property tax for an average, for their average homestead. And you can see that the dark black there on the last two bars show you that we are still, with those two things, the first being no change in our tax rate, we're still considerably under where taxpayers, what taxpayers were paying in 2009. And then even with a mil, we don't get all the way back to the tax levels that we had in 2009 for average homesteads. Probably even more remarkable is the non-homestead values. And if you look at those, you can see that the dark amounts there, the dark bars, show that we are still substantially below what non-homestead taxpayers were paying in 2009. And I will note that this particular class of taxpayers, while not the most numerically large in terms of volume, they, this is essentially about 70% of our total tax roll is in this category of taxpayer. So what are our next steps? Well, at a minimum, we're still looking at potentially a presentation, the first meeting in July, to help go over just some numbers. It would not be a decision-type session, but just to go over some new numbers. We should have some additional revenue numbers. We can report on expenditures at that time, show you what the departmental expenditures are. And then on July the 28th, we'll have a final budget update, adoption of our preliminary millage rate. And then September 8th, our initial budget hearing. September 15th, our final budget hearing. So with that, Mayor, I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Commissioners, I just want to make sure that we kept you up to date with the most current information as we move through this budget season. Questions or comments? Commissioner Sheen?
Rebecca, that was an excellent presentation, because I think it's really important to show the, what's happened with the tax quote-unquote reform and caps that have, you know, been imposing us through the legislature and things. But what I'm really, you know, was really troubling, and I was concerned about too, was the commercial property tax and how it was going to impact our budget. And I think something else that needs to be put out there is the fact that commercial properties, you know, a household may call the police or fire department maybe once a year, whereas a commercial property, if you look at how many times they will call for police officers or fire services, it's in the hundreds. And so that's the difficulty. They were paying more before, but they were using the services more, and now you flattened everything out, and now the folk, now, before you had the commercial properties paying their fair share, so to speak, now you flattened it all out and capped everybody, and now the homeowners are going to have to pick up the difference. So, you know, be careful about voting against your self-interests, because this is the kind of thing that happens, and now we're going to have to raise it for everybody. So again, those are the kinds of choices that we have, and they're not good choices. I mean, again, we had a perfect storm with property taxes, you know, they raised, and they fell, and they fell at the same time we put caps in place, which is why we're in the situation that we're in. So I thank you for that presentation. I think you've done a wonderful job of explaining that. I know people are going to be upset about the notion of any kind of an increase, but the bottom line is, we can't continue to provide a level of service with less revenue coming in, significantly less revenue on all sources. So again, amazing job in showing that, and finally putting it in a graphical form where we can really see where that's coming from. I'm distressed that one mil won't get us to where we need to be. But, you know, we'll just have to see where we go from here. Thank you, Matt. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Rebecca, have we had any discussions with the rating agencies? I know one of the pleasures we've enjoyed is having a superior credit rating to some of our other peers. As we look at final decisions, increased revenue, cut costs, is that going to have any kind of impact on our credit rating as it relates to our debt, et cetera?
If we do not raise revenues and do not cut services, we have to do something. We have to do one or the other. I was told outright by the rating agencies when we got rated earlier in the year, that if this structural imbalance did not get resolved through one of the, one of either of those methods, that we would be experiencing at a minimum, an outlook, a negative outlook, if not a downgrade. And I think that, you know, they were pretty, they were pretty specific about that. I assured them during our rating conversations that I felt strongly that this commission would do one or the other. And so they decided to hold off on any kind of a rating adjustment as a result of the structural imbalance until I could get through this budget season. But I think you can be assured that if we don't do something, that there will be a downgrade. Currently, we are AAA with Fitch, and we're AA+ and AA2 with the other two. AA+ with Moody's, AA2 with Standard and Poor's. And I think we could expect for downgrades from pretty much across the board. Alternatively, if we get this set, it looks like we may be able to see an upgrade from one of the rating agencies, because they're simply holding off on doing anything until they see what we do.
Got it. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioner Gray. And that's one of the reasons that we have been very persistent about maintaining our reserves at the level that we have. If we simply decided this year, all right, why don't we just drain our reserves to balance the budget, we most certainly would experience a downgrade. Commissioner Stewart?
Two things, follow along the same lines, and I always ask this question, and it's hard to kind of figure it out, but when we have to drop, I shouldn't say that, if there is a drop in our credit rating, it means effectively an increase in the borrowing cost of money.
True.
And in the borrowing cost of money, how has that impacted us over the course of a year? A good example is that if that impact is a five, we're going to pay $5 million more a year in interest cost, then what we have is we kind of have this $5 million decision to make, that we don't do it, you know, there's a gap there, that there's additional cost involved in making that change. That's kind of a, a negative incentive, if you want to call it that.
Exactly. I think if the impact of a downgrade, and I'll just use your example, was an impact on interest cost of $5 million on our covenant bonds, then that would be $5 million that we're currently spending on something else, police and fire, parks, whatever, that we can no longer spend that. We would be forced into taking those funds and paying the additional interest, because we have pledges in place, really, you know, hard obligations to our bondholders to pay the amount of interest that's due to them.
The second thing is that on page four, you talked about this gap. And I guess probably what I would like to see, and I guess it's something not immediate, but soon, if we can, you know, as we're looking at this, where do we see the gap going? Follow along with what Commissioner Sheen had said. You know, it's gone 13.9 to 20.3. Is it going to go to 22? Is it going to go to 24? Is it going to go to 26? Where do we see it going? It follows along, the question I shared last time was that, that it is relatively simple, not easy, but relatively simple, to increase taxes one year that solves the one-year problem. But if we, where do we address that for the course of the next five years and 10 years? And so I would assume that with a little bit of spreadsheet magic, you probably could come up with something that gives you an idea of where the gap is getting ready to go, and you've done, I'm certain, through some kind of long-term projection as well.
I think it will depend on the rate at which real estate values go up. The greater the pace at the increase in real estate values, the greater that percentage is going to be. Because, you know, the, whatever happens to be over the cap gets caught in that percentage. And so to the extent that, let's just take an example, we've got a 10% cap on non-homestead property, but that property rises at a rate of 15% annually, then that additional 5% would be upward pressure on that percentage. And essentially, I think, we in my office kind of turn that on its head. We believe that, other than new construction, that generally speaking, we're going to have between a 6% and 7% growth cap. When you take that and you just sort of translate it, it becomes about a 6% or 7% growth cap. So regardless of what real estate values do, we're going to be sitting at that 6% to 7%. So to the extent that we have our expenses grow at a rate higher than that 6% to 7%, keeping in mind that ad lorum taxes is only, is less than a third of our budget, and there are other, there are other revenues that come into play, we would be hard-pressed to keep up. And that is really kind of some of my concern long-term, is that, you know, that top-level increase that we can anticipate may not necessarily correspond to the increase in our expenditures that which, over which many we don't have control over. Example is fuel.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you're exactly on point. Part of the challenge is that when you, when this says a 6.3%, the general appearance from the public is that, you know, the costs are going up about 2% or 3% across the board, and you can't live on 6.5% increase. And what we've said is that roughly about 30% of our general budget has gone up about 6.3%. So that hasn't, there's another greater impact to the entire budget that's just not quite understood until kind of all the numbers kind of come out. So my fear is that newsletter, you know, newspapers' headlines are going to be, you know, city can't live on 6.3% increase. And that's simply not accurate. And it's the same way, the city doesn't have, the only general revenue coming in is coming from ad lorum taxes. And it's just a very subtle, but a very significant difference when you begin to try to explain that to somebody.
I haven't done the precise math, but a 6.3% increase in ad lorum is really less than a 2% increase on the general fund's revenues.
I would guess it's 1.7, 1.8%.
1.7, 1.8, something like that.
If costs go up 3% and the impact 1.7, then that's exactly the issue that Commissioner Sheen is saying, is this, we've got this artificial thing ahead of us. You know, we all argued that, don't do the artificial stuff, let the market rebound, the market will fix itself, and we'll all kind of live with that. But then they tried to fix it with the market, and then what we end up having is artificial adjustments going forward that nobody can get caught up on.
I would also add that the CPI for the last year has been 3.15%.
Okay, good. That's a good point.
So, you know, it sort of is self-evident.
Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just, I got a quick question. How are we accounting for the new development going on in the city? Because a lot of that has not been, we have not seen the impact yet, because some of it has not been finished. How are we accounting in terms of the revenue we were getting and in order to project for future years?
Well, once again, you know, that is something that we somewhat see coming, because we can look at our building permits and determine loosely, not really that precisely fiscal year to fiscal year, but we can, we can see that, you know, there's new construction coming on. We get that new construction number, but part of your 6.3% is new construction, all right? So it's sort of all in, that number. So that's not just increase in taxable value, existing taxable values. I can run that number. But new construction this year has happened primarily in CRAs. There's some in the Lake Nona area, but for the most part, most new construction, spotty certainly throughout all districts, but in many cases, for instance, the new hotel out at Universal is in the Universal CRA. Some of the buildings that are downtown are in the downtown CRA. So we can see some growth in those CRAs, certainly. But I think that, you know, I think we're going to, we're going to start seeing more of a general growth in new construction across all of our districts in the next tax year, keeping in mind that this particular valuation is as of January 1st of this year. So when you think about, you know, something that's going up, you know, some type of vertical construction, it is, it's stayed at January 1st that then gets put in the tax roll.
What I'm getting at is, what are the possibilities? If we, if we had, if we had no other choice, and we had to, besides cutting some of the services, we had to raise a millage, what are the possibilities that maybe in a near, very near future, maybe one or two years, we could drop it back down?
My, the difficulty that I see in that is with a 7% cap, on ad lorum growth anyway, you're, you know, and that that translates into about a 2% growth in the general fund's revenues. I don't see that the growth in current property values are necessarily going to keep us on track with inflation.
So what you're saying is, we need to go back to Tallahassee and tell them to change that cap?
Boy, I'd love it if you did.
Yep.
If we could get that done, that would be great, because it would, you know, I, it's just, you know, you look at other revenue sources. I'll give you a great example, communication services tax. It's gone down. It's not, not only not growing, it's going down as a result of people not having landlines anymore. So, you know, everybody says, well, I don't need this landline, I'll just use my cellphone. Then that reduces that tax.
Or taxing internet sales, right?
There are many things that can happen.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Ring?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you asked one of the questions that I wanted to speak on, and that was, how does our budget reserve fit into all of this? And by the way, thank you for your presentation, Rebecca. It was very good. But how does the reserve kind of fit into this, and how does that affect us overall? And if we had to reach into the reserve, what would we be reaching into?
Well, you know, that's really just a decision. I can tell you that if you reached into the reserve for all of this, we would have a downgrade. We'd have a bond downgrade as a result of that. So I think that, I don't consider that a good alternative. I'll tell you the other, the other problem, and it doesn't occur to folks very often. You get to do that only once. So you have recurring expenses of a number, and you try to fund that from reserves, you get to do it once. The next year, you have more growth in expenditures, and that hole gets bigger, and you don't have anywhere to go for it. So it's really not a solution, nor would the bond, the bond rating agencies look at it as a solution if we drew on reserves to fill this hole.
Let me ask this question too, concerning the remaining alternatives that you addressed on page six, to address the $17 million gap, you spoke about the $15 million across-the-board cut, and then an additional $17 million. So would that be an actual additional $17 million to the $15 million that you've already cut?
If you look on the, on the previous slide, there is a, that $15 million is getting us to the $29 million.
Okay.
So it's already been taken out of the gap. My point here is, the point of that slide is that I wanted to be sure that it was recognized that we had already taken $15 million in expense cuts before you start doing service level cuts. So we need $17 million of service level cuts, tax increase, or a combination of the two, because the $29 million is after that across-the-board $15 million cut.
Okay. Now with that, which kind of leads me into the next question, we talked about the fire fee, and today we didn't say anything about the fire fee. Does that kind of fit in anymore, or are we just totally disregarding that?
Well, I think we've, we've looked at it, we've studied it quite a bit. There's, I guess there's several issues with regard to... There's, I guess there's several issues with regard to a fire assessment, and one is timing. We have very little time to truly consider doing a fire assessment between now and the time that we would have to determine whether we're doing it, what impact that would have on other revenues and our budget, and to get our budget final by July the 28th. And in looking at that, it just seems so compressed, and it's such a complex issue to consider. One which really we should make sure that we're taking our time and we're really evaluating, because it's brand-new. So I think, you know, that is a consideration. I think the fact that it's brand-new, as you well know, any time that anything new is put out there, it's going to have some legal challenges to it. And I think that, you know, waiting would give us an opportunity to kind of see how this particular methodology slightly shakes out. And so we decided this last week that maybe that's not a good idea to try to cram this into a very short period of time here in the next month, and that it needs more consideration than we have time to give it at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ings. And a lot of local governments raised their mileage rate during the course of the recession when property values started crashing, and we collectively decided we didn't want to put that burden on our taxpayers during the worst part of the economy. But now that the economy is growing, and we recognize that even though the economy is substantially rebounding, the restrictions that legislature put on our growth are putting us in a dilemma of how do we pay for the services that the people expect us to provide them? So thank you for, that was a very clear presentation, Rebecca. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move right into the mayor's update on July 4th. I would invite everybody to join us at Lake Yola Park for food, fun, and fireworks. Fireworks at the Fountain is our area's largest Independence Day celebration, and for the first time, the Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra will be performing during this event, which runs from 4:00 to 10:00 with fireworks at 9:00, 10:00. Commissioners, I'm proud that we are, of the steps that we've taken toward equality and implementation of the city's domestic partnership registry that have made Orlando one of the most exclu-inclusive, not exclusive, inclusive cities in America, and we remain committed to equality for all. On today's agenda is an item that will allow us to join other cities in support of marriage equality by filing an amicus brief in a lawsuit involving that subject matter. And today, we'll be voting on approving funding for 10 Mayor's matching grant programs. As Commissioner Ings noted during Agenda Review, it's one of the best uses of money that we have, because it leverages fundings from our neighborhoods. A number of representatives from organizations who will be receiving Mayor's matching grants are here today. Would you please stand and be recognized if you are an organization that's a recipient of a matching grant? So also on today's agenda is a demolition contract for the deconstruction of the Round Building, which is right across the street, in front of the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts. Site work will begin in August, and the deconstruction in early September, with the removal of the brisole, which are the concrete panels surrounding the buildings. And I'd like to recognize Commissioner Sheen for her efforts in funding, and then coming up with ideas how to reuse the concrete panels, so more on that. But she used her district funding to allow us to remove those, so hopefully we can get them off of the building without breaking them, get them safely into storage. And speaking of Commissioner Sheen, she will celebrate a birthday before we meet again, so I would like to say happy birthday, and how about a little singing of happy birthday? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Sheen. Happy birthday to you.
My 25th anniversary, my 25th birthday, plus some, so.
Perfect. Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda, as I did, and also update you generally on issues from their district. We have made a couple of deletions from the consent agenda, removed some appointments specific to the certification board for, to be considered at the next meeting from item A3. And then at Commissioner Ortiz's request, we recommitted an item to the BZA, number eight, out of item, off of item C5. So with that, we'll move toward the rest of the consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Gray first.
Thank you, Mayor. And I tried to list all activities in District 1 on our website. A lot of social activities going on, so I would refer you to our website. I will be brief. I want to speak on my opposition to item A2. While I acknowledge it's a very important issue, I don't think it's one we should be dealing with here. I said the same thing in October when we talked about immigration reform, important, but I don't think it's our pervy here. And I will say the same thing the next time we talk about healthcare, gun control, or any other big issue that we have elected state and national leaders to deal with. So with that, Mayor, I will oppose A2, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit, I have a little bit of a different idea, Commissioner Gray, on that. I believe we do have to address these issues, because they do impact our communities. Voting no is based on more deep and philosophical issues. It has to do with the district, to our representative district is very conservative, and I have not closed the doors. I just, I got a lot of lesbian, gay and lesbian friends, which I love, and I'll put my life in front of a book for them. But those issues that transcend to more than just a vote at a city council are the issues that has to do with spirituality. So at this point, I'm just going to go ahead and abstain, not abstain, but register a no vote. And I have talked to some of the members of the gay and lesbian community. I think we have a mutual understanding. Our friendship and our love for each other has now stopped because of this vote. Earlier this month, I joined the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Metro Orlando on a trade mission to Puerto Rico. I want to congratulate Ms. Diana Belivar, the team that went to Puerto Rico on this trade mission immediately. Almost immediately, we got businesses that are already moving and expanding to the central Florida area, creating a great economic impact. It was a great, successful mission. So once again, I want to thank those in the Chamber of Commerce for doing such a hard and splendid job in the island. I want to thank Dr. Anthony Portigliati and his son Bruno Portigliati for a great presentation during our District 2 Neighborhood Leaders Council about Excellent Assisted Living Facility, which is in our district. They're hoping to finalize this project by December of this year, and we are very excited and looking forward to seeing it open. And the Excellence Assisted Living Facility will bring over 100 new jobs to the area, to the district. We're creating more and more jobs in that particular zone. Thanks also to the residents of the Johnson's Manor Senior Facility for the hospitality given to me and our staff, and my staff, during their Father's Day celebration last Friday. As always, we had a great time. And Mayor, I understand that you have mentioned this before, but I would like to take this opportunity to once again thank Universal Orlando for their commitment to our community and visitors. As you all possibly know, Universal Orlando has grown over 9,000-plus employees over the last 10 years, and they're building an employee parking garage that will come, that will home a total of 3,089 vehicles. This is a total gain of 2,088 additional parking spaces, which by all means increases the tax base for the City of Orlando that we're looking for. And with that, that's all I have for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me kind of start off with saying thank you to some Rosemont kids. I think we've got some pictures coming up, Ed. Is that right? This past weekend, we were, past week I should say, we were over at Rosemont, and we've started a special plan to help clean up the Rosemont area, and we started using our Rosemont kids out of the Rosemont Community Center. Did a good job walking around and picking up. We put some signs out to encourage the community to also do their part as well. So we're going to try and do some work in the next few weeks to really make sure that everybody in the area is trying to not be a litter bug. This will have a wonderful impact on the community, and I appreciate it. Along the same lines, let me also just mention on the Mayor's Matching Grant, I want to echo what Commissioner Ings said about the Matching Grant. The Matching Grant facade, there are several of those things on today, and those are, in our own case, those are local things that we do that harness either volunteer power or harness specific local businesses to be involved, and we can see the impact of that. I get a chance today to help with this long, and then to recognize the Lake Orlando Homeware Association for the work they're doing with Neighborhood Watch, and I appreciate that a great deal. And we're seeing some really significant changes out there that make it a better and safer community. Let me cover a couple of quick things. After Lake Yola's fireworks at the fountain on July 4th, Baldwin Park is doing their fireworks on July 5th. So if you have a chance, want to come over and enjoy that from 5:30 to 9:30 at the Village Center at Baldwin Park. And then, of course, one of the things I want to mention, and we do this, and I share it with, because these are some wonderful jewels, and it happened to be in my district, and that's the Manello Museum. On July 13th, they're hosting their Free Family Day. Many times, people don't want to come to museums because there are costs, and so once a month, they open up their doors to the entire community, much like Lew Gardens and every other group does the same thing. And this is one of those chances to come and look at the museum, get a chance to walk around, and see the wonderful art. We have a Native American art over there, and plus some other activities that are going on for the kids. So that'll be just a great chance over there. Let me also mention one last thing, and that's the Sodexo that we mentioned earlier. I am so thrilled to partner with Commissioner Hill on what we've done. It's, Sodexo is relatively new in the community in a large way, I should say. They've been in here for a while, but they've just gotten a concession of one of our major companies, and that has let them, or encouraged them, to be, have an impact on the local community. Offering 12,500 meals is significant, and we're thrilled about being able to do that. Having them pick up those meals, and us pick them up, provide them to the kids. We provide them not only to the kids in our programs, but to the kids that are involved in the neighborhood after hours. So 12,500 meals is a big deal, really excited about it, and it's a wonderful compliment what we're doing with the Summer of Dreams, and all the work that we're doing with that. Sodexo is a good company, and I'm thrilled to be able to partner with them, and also excited about partnering with Commissioner Hill. Next couple of weeks, we'll be out doing some cooking demonstrations for the kids, teach the kids how to make healthy meals at home, especially during these times when their parents continue to work and they're available. We want to make sure we're teaching them properly, so thrilled about doing that. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 4, Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor, and I certainly would like to comment on item A2. This is the authority to file the amicus briefs in Florida marriage equality cases. And I'd just like to read this, because there's been some statements made about why we would do this. "The City of Orlando has been asked to join other Florida cities in supporting those who are seeking marriage equality in Florida by filing amicus curate, or friend-of-the-court briefs, explaining why lifting the gay marriage ban is good for cities." Again, that's why it relates to here. "There are currently four marriage equality cases pending in Florida. The City of Miami Beach Attorney's Office is expected to be the primary author of the briefs, which include arguments that lifting the ban is good for the health and welfare of our citizens and employees to live in a nondiscriminatory environment, and that lifting the ban is positive for economic development and tourism. These briefs will not take a major time commitment, and will be done in-house by our city's Attorney's Office." I would like to thank Amy Anako personally and professionally for her work on this, and we're joining other cities on this. And I would just like to say personally that I'm distressed in this day and age that there would be any dissent for needing to protect our citizens and conveying rights for full marriage equality. "My relationship as a gay American, or lack thereof, should not be a threat to anyone's religion or life. I learned this the hard way, the rights that convey with marriage, as well as the rights that convey with divorce. Unfortunately, my domestic partnership didn't last very long. I was very surprised by that. I had no idea it was coming. Ninety days after I was in my domestic partnership, my partner decided to leave, and her family came into my home and helped themselves and took whatever they wanted. I have worked hard for everything I've had my entire life. I have never been so violated personally in my entire life. It was horrible, and I had no recourse, and the only things I could get back were the things I had receipts for. It was the worst thing I've ever been through in my life." And I have to tell you, marriage is also a wedding cake, but it's also a contractual, it's a contractual agreement between two people, that even if you break it, you have to go through a legal process to do. These are all protections that come with marriage, and that everybody takes for granted because they don't think about it. Because everybody else just kind of gets it, because they're already granted that. Everybody talks about the religious significance and things like that, and why they have religious concerns about it. You know what? I can get married tomorrow in a church, but I can't have the rights that are conveyed with that, and the protections that are conveyed with that. And that's all the gay and lesbian community is asking for, is simply to be able to join into a contractual relationship with a person of their choice. And the fact that our state leaders, our federal leaders are having concerns about that is absurd to me, and I'm just fighting for my own personal equality. Again, I've experienced this very personally, I've had the highs and lows of this experience, but I have to tell you, I would never, ever deny it to anyone else, because it's so important to be able to live and love the person of your choice, and to have that, and to have that respected by your state and by your federal. And I'm so delighted, Mayor Dyer, that you included that in the State of the City address, because it's important to our citizens. And you know what? Anybody who stands for discrimination can't just say they have gay friends. It's not enough to be my friend. You can't just say you'll be my friend and vote behind my back. The bottom line is, equality is for everyone, not just who we decide to be friends with or not. It's for every single person in this nation and this community, and I will fight with my last dying breath, even if I'm a single gal, for this right forever, forever. On the rest of the agenda, I actually have some other business. On item C6, the Beefy King sign. I am delighted to see that we're going to be restoring this historic landmark. It's a wonderful sign in District 4, and I'm delighted to be able to participate in that. I skipped item A4 on the Round Building demolition. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. We're going to take those panels off and hopefully use that in a very beautiful architectural feature. I've been working with the Neils Mark Schweitzer Associates in Florida Postmodern, they've been raising money as well, and I think that you're really going to like what you see. I know that when we lit the OUC building, it was amazing what happened with that, and I think these panels will really be a significant architectural landmark in our city. We're hoping to reuse that in a very dramatic fashion. On item C7, $20,000 facade grant for Dr. Martin for a new visit in Lock Haven Veterinary, right there in the Heart of Mills 50. Delighted to see that. The facade grant program has been wonderful in our main streets. Item C9, Pink Floyd's sewer benefit fees and TEF for them. I think this is a wonderful transportation impact fees. Another new business in Mills 50 area, delighted to support that as well. And that's all I had on the agenda today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 5. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, it's not in my district, but I did want to speak on the C6 item. My first job was Beefy King. In the eighth grade at Howard Junior High School. I was making a whopping $2.10 an hour. Got a five-cent raise, and I was ecstatic. So I love me some Beefy King. You've got to support that.
Yep.
Also, on the agenda, I want to touch on item B8, and that's supporting the purchase, extending the purchase of the contract with the city and the SED project, because I'm excited about that project moving forward with the job opportunities and also helping with revenue towards our budget. So eventually, we'll get going on that. Think it's going to be a great thing for the community at large. I think it's I, excuse me, I apologize. I3, is that correct? And that is the District 5 Traffic Control Cabinet and Trash Containers there, as we spoke last session about that. Hopefully, we can agree to get that moving forward, and I'd like to appreciate, go behind Commissioner Ings on thanking HJH, which is a private partner that will be helping us with that project, and also will be monitored by our review board here. I think- I think there's much art deco throughout the city, and I'm excited to see that it's coming to District 5 so that the community can have something that they also can participate and be proud of. Since being sworn in, city's keeping me busy and the community is also. On June 2nd, right after being sworn in and session, I was hauled away to Rock Lake and Spring Lake, which I was excited to go to, to meet the homeowners association there in Rock Lake and Spring Lake that is really happy about this container art also. We did a summer safety there with Georgina Butler over at OPD and Officer Kevin Williams gave some tips on how they can keep the community safe during the summer. I also was able to be with the other commissioners and the mayor. Thank you for the invite there at the Citrus Bowl where we met at the 50-yard line. And I must say, the community is very excited about that November 22nd kickoff between Family Routlers and the Muddy BCC Wildcats. So they just want me to say, let's get it done. And then I was off there on June 10th at Northwest Center. I met with Director Anthony Grant, and he showed me all the great things that are going there on, with the youth computer labs that the Magic help sponsor. And the kids are over there learning and met with their seniors there at the Harrow Marston Center. And now we're hoping to get a, spoke with Mr. Williams there about aquatic program for the seniors during the summer. So there's a lot of great things going on at Harrow Marston and the Northwest Center that I'm excited now to be a part of. We also was, guy had a tour throughout District 5 with Keep Orlando Green and Beautify Orlando Group. They were just so cordial and nice and showing me the district of District 5. And I tell you, I was quite impressed. I didn't see any glitter anywhere. Also, there was a wrap-up meeting at the Callahan Center with Enhancement Central Florida, and I've been one of the ambassadors there for the last eight months with the Paramore Heritage Community and the residents, talking about the different housing and different things we need there in the Paramore community. And it was a very positive wrap-up meeting there with the residents, and they had input on what they would like to see there in the community of Paramore. And it'll be coming before the DTO. And I must say, I was there all eight months, and it really is something that the community had input in it. Then I was able, was fortunate enough to go with PKZ and Orlando Soccer and Mrs. Kay Rollins personally and give out books for children here through the summer with Jet Blue over at the Downtown Recreation. Over 200 kids were supplied books, and they were excited. They were from the Boys and Girls Club. They were PKZ, they were Children of Paramore and others that had came in from other centers. And it was just, I do believe, in spite of, nevertheless, what you heard, I got away and was able to travel different places, not because I was able to leave Paramore as a kid, but because of the gift of books through the public library. And I do believe that children can leave their communities, no matter how dark or disparate it is, by reading, and it's very important. So I'd like to thank Jet Blue and Orlando Soccer for exposing the children of my district to reading and giving them some books to go home with. I'd like to thank Chief Mina of OPD and Chief Miller for coming out with me at the Jackson Center there here for summer safety tips. They had their employees that were there, and they were available for the community to help them with summer safety. The fire department was there to show the resident CPR, and I'd like to say especially thank you to Chief Miller. He's a man of his word. I spoke with him our last session about a fair that I was having there in the Paramore area, and could he send some workers out to show my resident CPR because little do we know, that certain district has a high rate of cardiac arrests throughout the city. And sure enough, when I got there 10:30 that morning, his people were already set up, and they reached over 150 kids. We were able to give food packs to for the summer, and I think it had to be over 50 adults that they gave instructions to. So I thank you, sir. Big Sisters, at that same time, with Rosalynn Johnson, had a food giveaway. We reached over 150 kids with non-perishable items, and what they did was went home with bags of food, regardless if they had five kids in the household. Each child had a bag of non-perishables, of cereals and capris and peanut butter and jam, something to carry them through after they go home in the evenings. I'd like to thank, last and least but most important, Commissioner Stewart and Sodexo for thinking enough, not just about his district, but all the kids here in the areas where most kids, as the young man stated this evening, that go home with no meal to eat at night. The only meal they get might be during the summer at that park. And it is so important that they're getting nutritious meals and that he reached out not just to the children of District 2, but those in the Ivy Lane Corner and the Mercy Drive Corner. I know something about that because I was a kid in the evening time because my mother worked day and night. I, most times, growing up in Paramore, didn't have a decent meal to eat. So it is very important and it's very real. So I'd just like to thank you personally, sir, for your contribution and thinking enough about not just yourself, but other children of the district. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 6, Commissioner Ing.
Thank you, Mayor. First off is items on the agenda. Item A1, the Mayor's Matching Grants for the 1314 Fiscal Year Cycle 2 Awards. This is obviously a great program, Marcia and Julie. Thank you guys so much for what you do for our community because a lot of the nonprofits that are involved are doing so much to help our kids in so many different ways. So I'm so very thankful to have the Collegiate Pathway, Tech Sassy Girls STEM Club, and the Orlando Monarchs with the Orlando Monarch Youth Leadership Baseball Program, and Millennium Elementary School, their RISE program, Reading Instruction Through Scientific Inquiry. So these and others, I know that we have another cycle coming later this fall. So you guys get ready because you know I do a lot of promoting of what you're doing out there concerning the Mayor's Matching Grants. And Mayor Dyer, again, hats off to you for this particular program because it does make a great impact on our community and it helps to empower our children and our community at large. And then also, Item B8, the Third Amendment to Purchase Contract Between the City and SED Development. You guys are working hard, and we're trying to work hard with you, and this extension really helps each and every one of us to really make a difference. As long as we can see the vision, I think we can really get there and really appreciate all that you're doing, trying to invest and help Orlando to be a very great place in which to live, work, and play. And then also, Item I3, approving the District 5 Traffic Control Cabinet and Trash Container Artwork. This is a great program, and specifically, thank you to Robert J. Hi, President of HJ High Construction, for all of his support in beautifying the community and working with the Paramore Kids Zone and getting them involved and helping them to shape their community as well. And with that, Ed, do we have pictures from the police chief and the mayor meeting with the District 6 residents on the Meet the Chief Night at the Dr. James R. Smith Center? I know I spoke on this before, but we didn't have pictures, but I do want to really highlight this summer safety series and this event that happened on May 29th in District 6 with Mayor Dyer and Chief Mina. And is that the only picture we have? Okay. I wasn't there, but I really thank you guys, Mayor Dyer and Chief Mina, because the community came out and they really were impressed with your presence there, too. And so, they saw some sincerity from the city police department and how they're trying to work to keep our community safe. And you see, we have a, you know, nice packed house there, and the community people, they were very engaged in this, and I thank you so much. And of course, Chief Mina, we had a problem with the construction along the roadway of Bruton Boulevard, and we had speeders going on in that area, and the police department was able to jump on that issue. And so, many of the speeding violators came to the Smith Center and were reporting to Marlon Potey that they were getting speeding tickets and they needed some help. But this was speeding through construction zones, and we had about three accidents that occur on Bruton Boulevard as a result of that. And so, our police department is reaching out to make our community safer, so thank you so much for that. And this past Saturday, June 14th, the Scholarship Awards Dinner of the 100 Black Men took place at the Rosen Center here in Orlando, Florida. Ronald Rogers is the president of this organization. The guest speaker was Roland Martin, who's the host and managing editor of TV1 National Radio Show. Seven students from Jones High School received college scholarships, and today, over $1 million in scholarships to Jones High School students have been awarded by the 100 Black Men of Orlando Organization. And of course, $10,000 went to the Family Law School for scholarships there. And I just want to also add that Regina McGill, Deputy Chief Charles Robinson, Tim Johnson, all of the City of Orlando employees are members of the 100 Black Men. So again, thank you guys for all that you do for our community. And then, of course, on Wednesday, June 18th, at Full Sail, the Honorable Rick Seem, Orange County Property Appraiser, had his State of the Real Estate Event, Sneak Peak Trending Values for 2014. It was very well attended. He had lots of guests, and he had a panel, too, to talk about these issues throughout our community of Orange County, and he showed some great statistics concerning how well we are really doing in Orange County from a real estate perspective. Then also, on that same night, we had an opportunity to visit Universal, the wonderful world of the Wizarding World of Harry Potter, Diagon Alley, and they opened up, this was like their Phase 2, and so they opened up the Phase 2 of the Wizarding World of Harry Potter. Just to let you know, Mayor, just to let you know, the Universal Hollywood is building Phase 1 of Harry Potter right now. But John McReynolds says that he gets so much support from the City of Orlando and his permitting department that they move quickly with their projects than what's happening in California. So we're doing some great things, and thank you for all of your support. And then the following night, too, Universal also opened up the Cabana Bay Beach Resort, and that was one you really missed. And I didn't go in flip-flops, but I was there in my red tie. And the Beach Boys were there, and they gave an hour-long show. And you had people inside the pool and all of that kind of thing. Is SED going to have any of this stuff up here, too? So that was a great event, so kudos to John McReynolds and Universal Studios and all of the Universal Studios family. And then, of course, on this past Saturday, we had a community event for the whole family, which was the Juneteenth Celebration, and we were honoring our history. And this is the history when the slaves in Gavelston, Texas, found out two and a half years later, after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, freeing the slaves January 1, 1863. But in 1865, those in Gavelston, Texas, found out two years later that they were actually free. So this is a time that we celebrate that particular part of our history, specifically for all of our brothers and sisters that were in bondage that now became free. And then, coming up, the 16th Annual Senior Summer Banquet. This is scheduled for Saturday, January, I'm sorry, Saturday, June 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the L. Claudia Allen Center, is sponsored by the Rathman Club, and we're looking to have a great time for our seniors. And entertainment by Ron Matthews. Rhonda McGee is our caterer. Then, Mayor, of course, you have this 50th Anniversary of the Civil Rights Act that you're inviting us to come out and take part in. What are y'all doing down there?
Commissioner Stewart just asked me if I wanted to mention that event to discuss.
See, I'm here for you. I'll even show the little flyer if you can see it. All right. The 50th Anniversary of the Civil Rights Act is scheduled for Monday, June 30th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's going to be in the Orlando City Hall Plaza in Rotunda, and we're asking everyone to come out. And this is from Mayor Buddy Dyer, the Chapter 57 Review Board, Civil Rights Board, and Mayor Dyer's MLK Commission. The Holocaust Memorial Resource and Educational Center of Florida, Florida A&amp;M University, and WUC FTV will commemorate the 50th Anniversary of the Civil Rights Act signed on July 2nd, 1964, by President Lyndon B. Johnson. Thank you, Marcia, for all that you've done to help put this together as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I forgot to mention, Mayor. Thank you for having a reception for me on June 30th in the Evergates Room on the 9th floor. The leaders are welcome out, and if you want to know more about me and my intentions, I will be unveiling my 100-day plan. So, thank you for allowing me to say that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Sheehan, all those in favor of the motion indicates by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Hearings, ordinance, first read, number one. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the growth management plan to amend the official future land use map by changing the future land use designation of certain properties to industrial and airport support district medium intensity, to amend future land use subarea policy boundaries and text, to amend objective policies and figures in the future land use element, transportation element, recreation and open space element, and capital improvements element, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done in all favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, let's move out of order and take up without objection, hearing order to second reading, number four.
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of West Church Street, east of South Division Avenue, south of West Central Boulevard, and west of South Huey Avenue, comprised of 7.82 acres of land, more or less, as planned development district with the traditional city and Paramore Heritage overlay districts on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Stewart. Okay, this is the second read of the PD ordinance for the Magic Sports and Entertainment District, and it is an appropriate time to bring the council and the public up to date on the Magic's plans that are extremely exciting. And of course, it will be a great complement to the entire corridor that stretches from the Citrus Bowl to the soccer stadium, to the Amway Center, to the Performing Arts Center, and will be, I believe, a catalyst for all types of things in that quarter. So what I would like to do is call on Alex Martin, President of the Orlando Magic, to give us an overview.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. It's good to be here this afternoon to ask for your approval of the Orlando Sports and Entertainment District. And... And we're here to show you some pretty pictures and also give you some details as to what we expect to fulfill in this planned development. Let's start with a little bit of history, if you will. And first, we must give the city kudos for its vision for a community's master plan that was developed back in two thousand and six, that really was the precursor to all of our community venues that have been under construction, the Dr. Phillips Center, the renovation of the Citrus Bowl, and our Amway Center. But it also contemplated what those venues would do and be catalysts for development in the areas immediately around them. And so, it was that vision that led us to not just the venues, but this Sports and Entertainment District that we're here to seek your approval for today. First, when you talk about downtown Orlando, we know that it's been a focus, a vision, an initiative of this mayor and this council to expand the reach of downtown Orlando, to reinvigorate the core of our community, to really bring an area whereby our citizens can celebrate the great downtown that we have. And we certainly heard Mayor Dyer on many occasions talk about how great cities are really anchored by great downtowns. And in order to do this, through our community venues and through this Sports and Entertainment District, we believe that visibility and access are a key component to anything that we do to create this core, this anchor, for our downtown and for our central Florida community. And this visibility and access obviously starts at the heart of our downtown, and that is really at the intersection of the four oh eight and of I four and the Amway Center and this piece of development that we are asking for your approval immediately across the street from the Amway Center. And, you know, it was really contemplated when we were doing the original design of the Amway Center, the first of our community venues to come out of the ground and operate under the Community Venues Plan of two thousand and seven. But these are some designs from the original charrette that took place in New York City with Populous, our architect for the Amway Center. And if you look at them closely, you can see that, you know, particularly up in this upper right-hand corner of some of these sketches, you can see that not only was the Geico Garage contemplated as an important component of the Amway Center, but immediately across Church Street, a new mixed-use development to help anchor that heart of our downtown community venue core was contemplated back in two thousand and seven as well. This is the existing site plan and the piece of land that we are asking for your approval for the planned development on. At the lower part of the site plan is Church Street, Central Boulevard at the northern piece of this existing site plan, Huey on the right and Division on the left. Of course, we currently have the city parking structure on the southernmost portion of the land and the current police headquarters on the easternmost portion, and the parking structure extending through the northwest corridor. And of course, there's the rescue mission that's at the top northwest corner of that piece of city block as well. This development will help anchor what will be a strong, again, heart of our community venues plan that will focus on sports and entertainment, particularly in light of your most recent approvals on the Major League Soccer Stadium that will just be a block away from the Amway Center in this proposed development, really creating a central core that will operate not just when these facilities operate, but as you'll hear in a moment from our architectural team, this is a development that intends to operate three hundred and sixty-five days a year, to bring a core of citizens into the downtown corridor, not just when these community venues are operating, but most days and evenings of the year. I think it's instructive for us, and we certainly, through our research, looked at great downtowns throughout America and how they've redeveloped and utilized these type of facilities to reinvigorate their downtown core. And it's not just in our country, but it's really around the world. And you're gonna hear momentarily from Nate Cherry, one of the principals at RTKL, which is our architectural firm that is helping us to design the SED project. But many of these developments that you're about to see here, RTKL has designed or is currently designing around the world, including this first one here that you see that is immediately adjacent to one of the stadiums that have been built for the current World Cup in Brazil. And you can see the massive planned development, much larger in scope and size than we're talking about here. But this shows you the breadth of which RTKL and its experience that they bring to the table to the SED project. Some of the others that are currently in existence and have been quite successful, again, in spurring on other development in major downtowns and cities around the country, Victory Park in Dallas, which, as you can see, is anchored at the far end, far center of the picture by the American Airlines Arena, their NBA and NHL facility in Dallas. The Power and Light District in Kansas City, which is immediately adjacent to the Sprint Center in Kansas City, again, the major sports arena in Kansas City. You can see, and I would call out in this specific picture, because Nate is going to address it in his presentation, the importance of great public gathering spaces in these developments. And you can see, and you'll see in virtually every one of these, the great public gathering spaces in the center of every one of these mixed-use facilities, developments, excuse me. Of course, the most famous of these type of developments that are located near arenas is L.A. Live in Los Angeles, immediately adjacent to the Staples Center. Again, much larger in scope and size and investment than we're talking about here. But this is an RTKL project that has been very, very successful. And many of the mixed-use developments that are included in this original concept are anticipated to be included in the SED project, just in a much smaller scale in scope than the L.A. Live project here. And then, this is one that RTKL is currently working on with AEG around the O-two Arena in Berlin. And again, similar scope in that it's a mixed-use development immediately adjacent to an arena facility in a major downtown city in the world. So, with that, I would just turn it over to Nate by saying to you that, of course, you know all of, I believe you know all of the basics of our mixed-use development, not the least of which we intend that this would be a two-hundred-million-dollar investment in downtown Orlando, of which would include the relocation of the Orlando Magic corporate headquarters into the office building element that Nate will describe. And as I think we've already heard earlier today, would also contribute new tax rolls to the City of Orlando and downtown Orlando, in that this is a piece of land that currently houses city facilities and is not currently on the tax rolls. So, we're very excited about our project. There are a lot of exciting elements that are going to be included in it. And at this point, to explain some of those and the principles behind them, I would call on Nate Cherry from the architectural firm of RTKL. Nate?
Thank you, Alex. It's a pleasure to be here, Commissioners and Mayor Dyer. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you what has been a number of years of effort on our part, and it's been a tremendous collaboration with the Magic and others. And so, we have done a number of projects like this in other venues throughout the world, and the variables of those projects is always different. And our objective is always to understand really what are the particulars of this place that make it unique, and what are the opportunities that we can make this about Orlando, that Orlandoans really embrace and make the project really their own. At the same time, there are some essential elements that we always try to incorporate into these projects that we think that are really essential, they're fundamental to the success of the project. And as you're reviewing this project, you want to think about how many of these elements have we incorporated as a way of understanding how the project functions. The first Alex touched upon, which is visibility and entries, he had mentioned, as we worked on L.A. Live, is you come into that project, you get a sense of really the history and the gravitas of the sports environment of that area, and the opportunity exists similarly here. How can we create a place that really tells a story about Orlando, its past and its future? And here you see a view, looking down Church Street, of what we imagined that visible entry would be, lots of pedestrian-oriented graphics and things that get people excited about the events that are happening in and around the area, and also really connect to Church Street, which is really a very functional, important part of this city, as Alex referred to as well. And it really has the opportunity to become the crossroads of the downtown. And this plaza that connects to it really has the ability to have a series of terraces that look down into the space. And so, how can we create a visible space that really functions very well when you're there just for lunch during a non-event or during a major event? And those are kind of the levels of visibility that we're looking for. Central Plaza has a really important role. There's no other space really like this in Orlando. And so, we want this project to have a level of flexibility where it can work in the daytime or at nighttime, something for everyone, whether you're a nearby resident or whether you're coming for a game, that there are a series of events and experiences that you can partake of that really makes sense for you, and you can really script that environment. And then, also, referring to MLS and the Performing Arts Facility, which is going in, and the Citrus Bowl renovation, how can we really use this space as a foundation for change so that someone coming to this place can see three or four or five things throughout the day and really come to downtown Orlando for an experience which takes place over a protracted period of time? The way you do that is unique retail offerings, great restaurants, outdoor dining experiences, terrific graphics, connections between other uses in and around the area, upper-story entertainment spots that look down into the plaza so that you can go for a meal or you can go for an event, and then it spills out into something else and you're staying for something else, for another drink after or to spend some time, linger at the shops. These are the kinds of things that make these event spaces work really well. Also, digital media, the opportunity for people to really come together, to gather, that this space really becomes almost Orlando's living room. So, the way we were really convinced that L.A. Live was gonna be successful, for example, is when President Obama was sworn in, and seven thousand people just came to the Nokia Plaza to just check it out and be together. I think the tremendous job that the Orlando Magic does and MLS will do with their events is gonna be a terrific infusion of energy into the plaza, but also, we want to make it so that the plaza really becomes the community living room for Orlando, if you will. New land uses, things that are unique that you can't see every other place. So, the commitment the Orlando Magic has made to move downtown, I think, is significant, a creative, energetic use there, different types of residential you might not find in other parts of the city, unanchored retail with unique offerings, different types of restaurants, unique apparel offerings or entertainment offerings, civic uses, whether that's in the plaza itself or actual activities in a building, the potential for civic uses for people to come together, I think, is a unique opportunity. The hotel, especially with its expo component, I think can act as an anchor for the project as well. That's a very important additional use that's gonna bring a whole different demographic, a whole different group of users to the plaza, they're gonna activate it. Broadcast facilities, I think Fox Sports is interested in moving their broadcast facilities right down into the plaza, which is gonna add a special amount of energy and buzz before and after game days. And then, also, vertical and adjacent mixed use. So, you have that interaction and sharing of uses is really important to the functioning. So, the office space, it's gonna be designed, not like a typical office building, so it would be very interesting, very transparent, have a lot of activity to it and a lot of visual interest as a design feature, and it really can act as an icon at the end of Church Street, and we're designing it as such, as you'll see. The hotel and conference has the ability to create trendy spots, indoor/outdoor spaces that have terrace views that look down into the space. It needs to have a bold, modern design, something which is really cutting-edge and speaks to Orlando's progressive approach. And it needs to have a very friendly hip feel on its inside as well. Here's a view, looking from Division and Church Street, looking from the southwest to the northeast. Here, you see the office building in the foreground, the residential tower behind it, and then the hotel just to the right of it with Church Street connecting through to the downtown. I think you'll see, it really creates a very strong gateway into downtown. Choreographing the experience, how do you get people to walk into and through the space? Visual cues, signage, graphics, varying the street section, anchors or destinations. We also have the opportunity, because the project was a super block, to break it into smaller blocks. So, we're extending Pine Street through the project so that you have the opportunity, you can see in the foreground here, really the connection of vehicular traffic through, so really breaking the project down into smaller blocks, and lots of pedestrian activity. You see that retail kiosk in the foreground there, it's gonna have perhaps a restaurant or other activities with the indoor/outdoor component, retail environments on either side, and then upper-story terraces that have human-scaled amenities that can be used by office workers in the foreground. On the left, you see the hotel looking down, terraces looking down into the plaza, and then beyond, you have the Amway Center. So, the interaction of all these things and how they work together is really gonna create a district that makes the sum the more than its parts. And so, we're really excited about the potential of that. I mentioned at L.A. Live events and the important role they play. And we calculate the size of the spaces to accommodate people in this space with the diagram that I'm showing there. It shows eight to ten thousand people, depending on how good a time they're having. You can accommodate almost twice that if they're standing really close together. But this is a really interesting potential because you have the opportunity, also with the terraces looking down, to really create a dynamic space. And you're gonna need it, because when the Orlando Magic wins the championship, there are gonna be twice that many people hang out on Church Street and taking advantage. So, Alex really pushed us to think in a very progressive way, and I think it's totally appropriate, and the opportunity for the Beach Boys and other great acts to come to this place for the celebration of success that you guys are right on the brink of. So, that's really what the space is designed to do, but it's also designed just to be an everyday space. So, farmers' markets, other smaller events can be accommodated in smaller parts of the space. Church Street can be closed off, you can have smaller venues within that space, so it has tremendous flexibility as well. And these are the types of events we imagine, those light and sound towers create a tremendous level of flexibility. You don't have a lot of take-down-and-put-up with sound and light and that sort of thing. It's all built into the project. So, you have an unbelievable amount of flexibility in the types of events. These are just some we imagined with Alex and his group. Here, you can see how that plaza works, and it's really designed so that it feels very intimate. It's not a massive space. It's only about a half an acre in that circle space. So, it has a series of, sort of like layers of an onion, so that when you're there, when there is an event, doesn't feel like this vast, overpowering space. It still feels very intimate, and you can have lunch there, and it makes perfect sense. This is an example of a project we worked on, very similar in San Jose, where the light rail station connects down to the H.P. Arena. And so, these tree-lined streets and the visual cues and the signage really make those connections very possible and very friendly for pedestrians. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to create a series of sort of breadcrumbs that goes along Church Street and Pine and connects to OSED and also the MLS Stadium, so that's, people are really getting out of their car and walking throughout the downtown. And in terms of phasing, we're excited to hear about taking the land down more quickly and the opportunity of how this project can really work with some of the great elements that the mayor is working on right now with the Performing Arts Center, so that it really becomes a catalyst for all of downtown. With that, we will answer any questions you might have. With that, we will answer any questions you might have.
Great presentation, very exciting, and a lot of hard work gone into that, Alex.
Mayor, I would just, and Commissioners, I would add that we concur with staff's recommendations on the PD, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions or comments? Commissioner Ortiz?
Actually, I want to congratulate you guys. This is awesome. This is really exciting, and I can only imagine how the community is going to feel. Is there any way we can have a copy of that presentation? And is there any way that we can call some of you guys to come over and do presentations to some of our community groups?
We'll be happy to, and I believe as of now, Commissioner Ortiz, this presentation's a matter of public record, so everybody has access to it.
What I mean is the actual, if I can get it in a USB or something so I can use it.
Yeah, we'd be happy to. We'd be happy to.
Commissioner Rains?
Thank you. Okay, so now that we have this big plaza and stuff, can we have a nice, big jersey of Nick Anderson and it's retired and that kind of thing, having a retirement celebration? And then also, you remember Shaq, Penny, Horace, and all of those guys?
There's a lot of great history. There is, Commissioner.
Can we have some bronze statues of those guys out there?
Actually, we started a nice, very nice new Hall of Fame inside the Amway Center, Commissioner, where we're honoring all of those great guys.
That's over there.
But I'm sure there will be plenty of opportunities for Magic branding and recognizing our history across the street in the SED as well.
Okay, but I would love to see Nick's jersey retired, though.
We'll take that into consideration.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
What about Bo? Okay, is that it? All right, easy enough. Thank you, Alex. Great job. I guess, do we do a motion?
We got to vote. We got the motion.
Okay, I saw most votes.
Yeah, we got the motion.
Kyle, did we have, we have a motion on the floor, right?
You do.
Oh, okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Further discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations. Okay, back to number one. Madam Clerk, hearings ordinance is second read.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the city, certain land generally located north of Vine Street, east of Francis Avenue, south of Hand Boulevard, and west of South Bumbi Avenue comprised of .46 acres more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as residential low intensity on the city's official future land use maps and designating the property as the R3A-T district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to lighting regulations, amending Chapter 63 Environmental Protection by creating new Part 2M entitled Outdoor Lighting, consolidating existing outdoor lighting regulations in the new Part 2M, providing purpose and intent of the lighting regulations and definitions, requiring an outdoor lighting plan for certain development, providing submittal requirements for applications for outdoor lighting plan approval, providing lighting plan regulations, variants, approval process, and alternative standards for outdoor lighting plans, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz. Second by Commissioner Ings. Let's see, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Signature Landscape Contractors LLC a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the city of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz, and signs of the economic recovery are we're getting roll-off franchises almost every week. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Let's move to ordinances for Street, number one.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the land development regulations for the Orlando Medical Plaza Plan Development, generally located north of Fernwood Street, south and west of East Copeland Drive, and east of South Orange Avenue, and comprised of 2.1 acres more or less, amending the development plan, development program, landscaping plan, architectural regulations, and other land development regulations of the plan development, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate certain land generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Kirkman Road and the Florida Turnpike, comprised of three acres of land more or less as industrial on the city's official future land use maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Yes, sir. I just want to say thank you to Dean Grandin and his staff for both of these. They've done a tremendous job in helping to move this along, so thank you so very much, Dean Grandin.
Okay. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Here, I think I have the wrong number three in my book. Let's see it here.
Indoor shooting range, retail store.
Yeah, it's not what I have here. So...
Why don't we go to number four?
Let's go to number four. Okay. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the city, certain land generally located north of Josephine Street, east of Penney Street, south of Beach Boulevard, and west of Old Cheney Highway, comprised of .0995 acres more or less, providing legislative findings and for the revision of the city's boundaries, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, what she need us to do here?
Um... Somebody can pull it up for me on their laptop?
Kyle has it.
Okay. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida designated certain land generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Kirkman Road. No, this is not the right one.
No, that's not the right one.
We've already done that one.
It's a comp plan and a PD, and they're the same piece of property, they're two different orders.
Oh, it's a second. So it is number three. I'm sorry, it didn't look the same, but I guess this is a shooters world item. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida designated certain land generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Kirkman Road and the Florida Turnpike, comprised of three acres of land more or less as planned development district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Ms. Rains?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we got the right one, right?
All right, so moved.
Second.
Yeah, because I was looking for the other stuff that talks about the indoor shooting range, the retail store and ancillary uses.
Kyle Mann?
Yes.
Alana? Are we all good?
Okay.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? All right, just because there's confusion, Kyle, tell us.
You have two different ordinances there. They're both related to the same piece of property. The first one changed the conference of planned future land use map designation over to industrial. This one is your zoning ordinance, so this one takes it over to PD. So it was the same piece of property, two different actions, two different ordinances, but you're right, and we're seeking your recommendation of approval on this ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And that is the conclusion of the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for tuning in or joining us here in chambers.